Jenny, if you could take the role.
Councilmember Thorson.
Here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Here.
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Mayor for Long.
Here. The Corvus is present. I motion to adopt the agenda.
I'm moved, Your Honor.
By Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Taken by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those. Agenda is adopted. I'll turn it over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the 2023 Levy and Budget Workshop for the General Fund. Back on July 5th, 2022, the City Council workshop represented the kickoff of the 2023 budget process. In that workshop, the City Council had the opportunity to discuss and set the 2023 Levy target and to identify their goals and objectives for the 2023 budget. So items up for consideration will be including the 2022 budget and city-based property tax levy, driving factors for 2023, preliminary valuation changes, 2023 potential property tax impact, HRA and EDA property tax levy, and the budget calendar. With that, I will turn it over to Director Winnick. Finance Director Winnick, to work his magic.
So you said this is going to be entertaining tonight, do you think?
I don't know about entertaining. I do have to start off by saying that the last workshop, at least for me, was very inspirational and was one of the best that I've had. Part of that was because really got to hear from all of the council members what the goals were for this year and for 2023, and then to look at levy targets and really kind of for the city to kind of develop a focus. And so I did get excited with that, and I took a little liberty with some of the components that I... little bit of plagiarism and so forth, but I actually drafted up kind of a mission vision and some strategic priorities based upon what I had heard. So I took all of the information that was presented, and I've got a couple of slides that I'll show you with some of that information. But yes, it was actually very, very... it was inspiring. And so I give a lot of credit to the City Council. And to be honest with you, you have never disappointed me, and I love the dialogue and I love the direction. And even yesterday afternoon, I had the opportunity to have a council member give me a call and had some questions and wanted some additional information. So I did hand out a bit of additional information on the 2019, 2020, 2021 budgets versus actuals. The actual information was already given to you, but wanted to have the budget information there to kind of show you how we did in comparison to what we budgeted in actual. And I think that that is very good information to have, and I thank that council member for bringing it to my attention. And so Councilmember Thorson, thank you very much for that. I think it does help give a little bit more picture of where we have budgeted and all those actuals have come in. And I'll touch base upon that a little bit later in the presentation. I'll pull up my Excel spreadsheet for that because it wasn't included in your workshop documents. And then tonight, we also have all of the department heads here. You've also been given all of the line item information to where we're at with the general fund budget at this point in time. And so if we have any questions for department heads or open dialogue... I've been kind of told that I only get about 25 minutes, and we really want to have an interesting dialogue with City Council and the department heads. And so we did take a little bit of the direction, well, a lot of the direction, from our discussion last week when we talked about staffing. And so at the very end, we do have some proposals for some increase in staff, and we'll show you what that has as far as impact on the levy, and then just open it up for discussions. I'll field any discussions that we have about the PowerPoint information, and then anything on finance, and then the other department heads are here to answer any other questions.
And I would welcome the department heads, if you want to sit up here.
Don't all run up at once.
Want to come up here?
No, no. It'd be nice if we could just move this away, and then we could all sit and talk together, but it's whatever you guys feel comfortable with.
That's the brain trust, right here.
So now you got them all at your table.
We have them all. This is fantastic. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is really to review the 2023 goals that were discussed last week. We'll kind of go through that kind of quickly. Draft of the mission vision, strategic priorities, 2023 levy target from the last workshop. Again, we'll look at what those driving factors for the 2023 budget were. Then we'll review the 2023 preliminary levy of what has been put together at this point in time, and then the preliminary general fund budget, and then we will review some options for additional staff, and then we'll open it up for discussion with the department heads. So the goals. A lot of the information, you know, was... I took it from all of the post-it notes, from all of the comments, took the document that was developed in a workshop with the prior city manager, and I kind of put them in little groupings to kind of make it a little bit more logical. You won't see that, but so it, you know, starts from, you know, promote the city. I consider that branding, you know, the backdrop in the council chambers, celebrating the North St. Paul 135 years, the snowman. You can see that there's a lot of great information that's in here. And we talk a lot about, you know, to me, there were some bigger themes. There was, to me, kind of like three big themes that came across, and one was the branding and the customer service to our residents and really embracing the rich history of the city of North St. Paul. And to me, that's that first component is really what's happening in there. And then there was a big discussion on investment, investment in our infrastructure, you know, whether it's a student-built housing, redevelopments that are going on, whether it's, you know, what's going to be happening on Highway 36 and Century Avenue or Highway 120. The discussion of making this a walkable community where we have, you know, priorities of walking paths, you know, integrated into our street projects and so forth. And, you know, and then, you know, then there were some things of looking at, you know, ordinances that, you know, relate to non-traditional vehicles, and then there was the recruiting of services and staffing resources. And I think a big key to it was to look at investing in staffing resources equitably so each department's needs are met. And that was kind of a key when I got together with all of the department heads that resonated with me a lot. And to me, again, a lot of credit goes to the City Council because in the time that I've been here, which is now over a year, by the way, I can say that with a big smile, that we have done a fantastic job of addressing a need in our public safety and particularly the police force. And we've added a number of positions, and Phil will talk about that a little bit later. But it's... we are finally, for the first time, and you've almost been here a year, that we are fully staffed, which is, yeah, and to protect our residents. So the credit really goes to the City Council for that. Again, it inspired me. I do believe in mission visions and strategic priorities. I look at and moving forward in the budget process, I really believe that once we've established, you know, an acceptance on a mission, a vision, strategic priorities, that everything that we budget should tie into those strategic priorities. And when we look at those tough decisions, and I really believe that they're now and they're going to continue in the years ahead, that we really do need to be tying our asks and our needs and our wants to the strategic priority and how we move that needle. And so I, again, there's plagiarism. I'm not saying that it's all my creative thought, but I kind of just drafted up a couple of pieces. Sometime in the future, I would highly encourage that there's a workshop that is kind of dedicated to looking at a mission vision and strategic priorities. Really, the choice of words is really important because in a small sentence or two can really capture a lot of meaning. I'm not saying that this is perfect, but this... that really needs to be discussed with all of the council members. It's not just me plagiarizing and pulling stuff in my own head and putting it on paper. But I just took a draft, and I'm just going to read the mission and the vision. And the mission to me, you know, overall mission for the city is to improve the quality of life in North St. Paul through delivery of extraordinary public services in a responsive, open, sustainable, and fiscally responsible manner by caring and competent professionals. And the vision, and I kind of have a coined little phrase, is an extraordinary community to call home. And the vision is creating a safe and welcoming community where we all work together to enhance the quality of our lives, and we're proud to call our home. And to me, there's a lot of meaning behind the choice of some of those words that are in there. And as we have a population that becomes more and more diverse, as we have a population that'll end up churning from more of an older community to a younger community, I think that's where we're going to see the amenities of the city becoming more and more important. And this city has its own identity with a downtown district, and the investments that have happened there with, through the redevelopment have been just very impressive and need to continue. And I think being here in this city also offers all of the amenities that the whole metro area provides. But what's totally impressive in my time being here is that we hang on to who we are and how we got to where we are, whether it's the snowman, whether it's the references, and I don't want to make a promotion to the new diner that's in town, but to using a name that's from the past. The same thing with the development of the Centennial Building itself, and maybe there'll be something done even with the Lily development if that moves forward. But the choice of names also is incorporating the rich history of this city. And then I put together some strategic priorities. The highlight of them is quality of life, creating a safer community together, investing in our community, and innovative and high-performing organization. So from the last workshop, again, I thank you very much for all of your input and everybody participating. It was excellent. I asked the question about what everybody thought about the 2023 levy target. So no names are put in here, just council number one, two, three, four, and five, and I put in the highs and the lows. And if I were to take an average of those highs and lows, it would be the levy target would be in the range of 4.2% to 7.5%. Then I did a modified average for the levy target where it's the low and the high, and it comes to 5.25% to 6.87%. So that is kind of where, in putting this documentation and making some changes to the budget documents where I was targeting to bring this today's budget information within that range of the modified average levy target. Again, the driving factors for 2023, we saw last two weeks ago in the first workshop where we have total personnel costs rising 5.4%, existing personnel, that's also including a community development director and a new police officer. There's a slight increase in the debt levy, a reduction in local government aid, metro in-aid increase. All of those increases that are, that have been identified, you know, is approximately a half a million dollars or 8.5%. Again, a reminder about, you know, inflation, and I think that's actually been revised now month over, I think, June, over June of the year is at 9.1%. So the preliminary levy of what we've put together right now at this point in time, and again, there's still a lot of work to be done, is that we've developed a budget that comes in at 6.87% of a levy increase. HRA and EDA are still being shown at their, the state statute maximum that could be levied. Again, there needs to be discussion both with HRA and EDA on what their plans are and justification for doing that as a levy increase. So here's how the general fund looks. That from our 2022 budget, our 2023 proposed budget at this point in time shows an increase of $477,000 or 6%. And expenditures, again, increase the same amount, so we have a balanced budget. I did increase some revenues. So we were at, you know, potential of an 8.5% increase. I've got us at the 6.87% with some increases in some of the revenues. And if we were to look at the same revenue information is the same, but if we look at departments, you know, we're seeing the increases that are on each department and the dollar value for those increases. And probably the biggest increase that you're going to see from a dollar value is in the police. And again, that they're, you know, over, but half of that is the new officer that was approved middle of this year, but yet wasn't funded, so it has to be funded in the 2023 budget. And then created some, took your direction from last workshop and said, hey, you know, what are some of our staffing needs? And when we got together, all the department heads got together, and we kind of had a... and we did actually have an excellent dialogue. Everybody put out their needs, and collectively as a group, we challenged one another, and we came to agreement how we would prioritize those needs, and also to look at that we don't want to see a huge increase in the levy either. And so that's something that we have to manage, and so we put together these options. So what the budget that has been presented at, or is being presented right now at this point in time, and all of the line item detail is another attachment, is 6.87%. If we were to move that LGA reduction of $119,000 instead of from the general fund, but to reduce it from the street maintenance fund, that would reduce that levy impact from 6.87% to 4.82%. In other words, 2.05% is what that loss in revenue would be. And then we looked at positions. And the top priority that we put collectively from the department heads was to add a full-time fire inspector. That would raise it up to 6.73%, but in doing so, we could reduce a part-time code compliance position, and we could also reduce money in the initial duty shift that is currently being funded. So by adding that position, making the reductions in the code compliance and the initial duty shift, we would then be at a 5.51% levy. And then the second need that we looked at for additional staffing was in the Public Works Department for street maintenance, water utility, and so forth, and that was to add a public works maintenance worker. It would be split general fund at $64,000, and enterprise funds would have $52,000, and that would increase the levy 1.1%, bringing our levy to 6.61%. Those are not included at this point in time. Those are options for you to look at and discuss. And then a note that in the 2024 budget, we would be looking at the potential of adding additional staff, one in the finance department, an accountant, and in the police department, a police investigator. And that was what collectively we had looked at and prioritized. And if City Council were to be in agreement with adding or making these changes, the levy would be 6.61%. And looking at it from the bigger holistic point of view is that it's actually adding four positions. So that's 6.61% is adding that community development director's position, it's adding the police officer, it's adding a full-time fire inspector, and it's adding a public works maintenance worker. And so with that, I will answer any questions regarding this part of the material and then open it up for questions regarding the whole budget altogether, any direction that you would, or any other, you know, information that you want to see, or any other questions for, particularly for each one of my fellow department heads.
I think in the past, we've had the department heads kind of explain, you know, like Jason asking for a full-time inspector, you know, what are the needs now? You know, why do we need a full-time inspector? And we have that... is that going to be a different talk, or is that tonight?
No, we certainly can do that. I wanted us to kind of have a discussion about this information, first of all, if there's, you know, is it clear as mud? Any questions? There was all the line item information was presented. There may be some discussions there. There may be additional information that's being requested, one of which, and I'll pull it up real quickly before we get to this other part. And it was to look at the information in the line item detail that shows the 2019, 2020, 2021 actuals. And so it's taking the budget information so you can see how the budget, how the actuals did versus the budget. There's a very interesting... I see a very interesting piece here that for each one of the years, 2019 all the way through, you know, with the actuals through 2021, you're seeing that revenues have outperformed what we budget. The large part of that, with the exception of the year 2020, is really due to permitting. Permitting in 2019 was $330,000 over what was budgeted in 2021. It was another, it was 326. In 2020, the bigger driving force of 457 intergovernmental was, you know, the first coronavirus funds that were received from the federal government. So what's driving that bottom line of having a increase in our fund balance from 2019 was 524, 2024-13, last year was 824, is really the revenue side. If you look at the expenditure side, in 2019, we spent almost $120,000 more than what we had budgeted. And 2020, we spent $107,000, almost $108,000 more than what we had budgeted. And then last year, we were actually under, under by $214,000, 100 of which we've already taken away from in the 2022 budget. And to refresh your memory, that's where there was a contracting lawn service contract for approximately $100,000 that we took away, and instead, public works staff is providing that service, much with the seasonal help. So really, the driving factor is really on the revenue side, and definitely can take a look at. I did increase some of the revenues already, but definitely can take a look at. It's very hard to estimate permits. A lot of the increases that we saw here, you know, is due to the redevelopment that took place in the city. Will it continue? You know, it's kind of a guesstimate. Definitely could, you know, increase some of those. Have no objection in doing so, but they need to be, I think, more on the conservative side. We're sitting pretty well. Again, as a reminder, where fund balance is in the general fund, we're at 44%. We just made a fund balance change of trying to have a minimum of 40%, so we do have a little bit of room. So if, looking at those options of staffing, if we're not comfortable at a 6.61% and we are in agreement with the additional staff, if we still want to reduce that levy and be closer to, let's say, six, five and a half, I think we could adjust our revenue projections and still be, I think, relatively safe that we would be able to achieve those. And if we didn't achieve those, we still have that room in the fund balance that if we were to go negative in the 2023 on the revenue side. But again, it's a risk that you end up taking, and you certainly don't want to compound that impact moving into the 2024 budget. So if there's no specific questions with any of this material, I did do in my time.
Do I go?
Did you get it? The timer went off. We will, we will, we'll first hear from our fire chief, Jason Mellinger, to talk about the additional full-time fire inspector and then the reduction in the part-time code compliance and the reduction in the initial duty shift, and hear his thoughts and reasoning to why he's put together this request. Jason?
I think I'll go up.
Drop that.
Candy is here.
I'm here. Sure.
Can you hear me? Oh, I have to hold it? All right.
Thoughts are singing karaoke.
Right, karaoke night here in council chambers. First off, just want to say thank you for having me, Mayor and Council, and being able to be here with everybody. And additionally, say thank you to Brian and Dan for being a part of this process and the way it's gone thus far. I haven't been a part of a lot of these, but this year definitely focused, a lot of good communication, very good conversations. And like Dan said, as department heads, we've spent a lot of time together having a good dialogue on everything. So I appreciate what Dan's put together and what Brian has been doing. So. I haven't been a part of a lot of these, but this year, definitely focused, a lot of good communication, very good conversations, and like Dan said, as department heads, we've spent a lot of time together having a good dialogue on everything, so I appreciate what Dan's put together and what Brian has been doing. So I guess this is my pitch for the position. I'm not a good salesman, I'm more of a straight-to-the-point type fax person, so I'll kind of talk a little bit what's going on within the fire department area and what I see as our needs are. So what it comes down to really is I'm looking for redundancy that can support our current fire inspector and myself and the positions that we have, and to provide better services in areas of the fire inspection and code compliance administration, our daytime fire and EMS response, and just having that consistency with having more than one, one position in there. Currently, we are, from what I see, we're deficient in providing a good product that we previously had in prior years with having three full-time positions, the chief, the deputy chief inspector and fire inspector, and two part-time code compliance positions. During this time, as I said, working and talking with Dan and Brian on the budget, the potential of the budget, a little bit more of review, our changes there, but within this, the last year, the difficulty of maintaining part-time code compliance, so we have a current part-time code compliance person that will be leaving us to a full-time position in the BLS unit in, in St. Paul, and we did post that position internally to our staff, and it was open for a couple of weeks, and we were unable to fill that. And conversations at, at the time, we were just going to leave it as be as we work through this, this budget for 2023. So as I said, working with Dan and reviewing, wanting to adjust and provide better service while being fiducially responsible, instead of just proposing an increase 100% to the position through the levy, we talked about what I can do with that part-time code compliance position, instead of staffing that one, rolling that into this fire inspector position, and then also making some adjustments on what we have as our initial duty shift on the weekends for coverage as well to help fund the position. The fire, second fire inspector position will also assist with current, the inspector from being overloaded at this point, who is unable to slow down and trying to create a better work-life balance for him. Since 2014, we've lost four full-time fire inspectors in that position, basically over the last eight years, to same or similar positions that left because they had better pay and a smaller work, smaller workload. We could have taken steps to, to keep them, but we're unable to. And every time we lose a position, it's, we're starting over from ground zero, and I have to, to build up from there, which makes it difficult for us. Specific areas that I want to improve on within our inspections, which equal better maintained properties, are going to be the fire code and life safety code and property maintenance for rental properties, so providing more than one person that's managing. So right now, I have one fire inspector, and I'm also assisting with those inspections as well as, as needed, which requires me to look away from my administrative duties and keeping from looking at things at the top and providing inspection duties. It's been some time since we've reviewed our commercial properties and inspected those and updated our contacts and our pre-plans as it relates when we respond to fire calls and having the correct information in there. It's been since at least 2014, one myself and the previous fire inspector at that time were able to do it. And again, because of turnover and lack of staff, we've just been unable to keep up with everything. The additional increase of DHS inspections, Department of Human Services, so those are the group homes, whether they're commercial and/or residential and daycare facilities, again, commercial and/or residential, is an area that continues to grow and be a part of, that now that I have Brent state certified as a DHS inspector, I no longer have to go out there and do those, and he's able to help out, but still be a part of those. I want to get back into our Safe Haven program. We, we stopped due to COVID, but have unable to get back in there just because of the added workload, and that was a great program for our, our property owners in town, not any rental property or anything along that line, but for our property owners, for us to do inspections and meet with the owners and update their safety devices, whether it be smoke detectors, carbon monoxide detectors, and just go over things with them at their home. A lot of the rental properties, because of COVID, again, we were unable to do the interior inspection, so a lot of things were being inspected from the exterior only. So after two years of this, now we're having to play catch-up on, on everything. So as we begin in, within the last couple of months here, starting with our single-family home rentals, we're definitely seeing, or Brent is seeing, an increased lack of maintenance throughout a lot of the homes, along with the property owners that, that haven't been in there. So we're addressing those needs, but knowing that we need to be able to stay on, on top of these to, to keep things right. Although we're utilizing OpenGov, it's increasing the productivity, which is an excellent tool, but it also requires a lot of the monitoring for us to keep up and, and keep it moving forward, people that are using it along, and we're doing a good job of utilizing it for our inspections and communications. It's the primary tool that we are using, and, and right now, it's twofold, again, myself and, and Brent utilizing OpenGov for the communication and inspections, which is good, but I believe, you know, this is something that could be handled between the fire inspectors. The troubled and difficult properties require constant and consistent management to make better, and some of the difficulties that we see with having part-time staff is only being here 20 to 24 hours a week. If they're unable to be here and answer questions, it's going to fall back on myself or Brent, and then, you know, trying to get back into the role of digging into the, the issue of what's going on and being able to, to handle it. So having a full-time person that's going to be able to keep up with those communications and, and properties, along with dealing with legal counsel on those as well. The full-time schedule will also help with the workload and keep communication with all of us together, and just a better overall approach. One of the areas that our part-time code compliance staff deals with is zoning inspections as it relates to driveways, the fences, chicken bees, et cetera, and doing those inspections as well. And again, everything's coming through on OpenGov, which is great. However, when an inspection request comes in and we don't have part-time staff to do it, then it has to get pushed off to either Brent or myself to make sure that we're getting those done. And obviously, continue with better community outreach. We're seeing a lot more of this, definitely Monday through Friday, just with the programs that are going on locally through the schools, whether they're wanting us to come out to their schools or facilities, or them come here to, to be with us and take a look at the facilities and talk to them. We also have, to update some files, we have old hard copies from when we did our inspections through the rental licensing program that were scanned in through laser fish, and we're also in the need of updating those as we go through the new OpenGov system and providing that information and getting that in there as, as well. It will also provide consistent daytime staffing for fire and EMS response, and not necessarily knowing, you know, Monday through Friday through daytime when most people are at work, who's going to be able to respond to staff that, that truck. The full-time employee will have better, overtime, they'll have better knowledge and skills and abilities, and an opportunity to conduct more training as, as well, just from the lack of have, being here less as a part-time employee. And overall, be able to assist me with some of the administrative duties that, that I used to do as a deputy chief fire inspector with just reviewing incident reports, percentage reports for our part-time firefighter response, payroll input, et cetera, along that line. So that's kind of the basis of that in a nutshell. I mean, the way I kind of talk to the department as our, our group, the department heads as a group, you know, is what do we do if, if we don't get that position? And really, it comes down to having the conversation with, with staff on how we're able to move forward, what we're able to do, not do, what we need to curb, because really what I'm concerned about is seeing the trend in losing former fire inspectors to other departments with the growth of other departments around us, and knowing the future growth of what they're going to be doing, that those opportunities are going to be there again. So I'm trying to create, you know, a culture within our department where they're going to want to stay and, and be happy and not be overwhelmed, and that's a, that's a big part of it for all of us here, not, not just in the fire service, but as you've heard from Phil and the police. So I open it up to any questions you have for me and see what I have for you as answers.
Jason, do you have the amount of rental properties that we actually?
Yeah, so.
I mean, rental properties, you got the group homes, you got, I think, other type of homes in, in the community, and I'm assuming that takes a lot of time to?
So I'll, I'll just start first, I guess, with the DHS inspections, so as it relates to group homes and/or daycares. So if somebody is opening up a new facility, whether it's in your home or in a commercial building, they fill out the paperwork with the county or the state, and they're required to have the local AHJ, the fire department, do a fire inspection, and you have to be a certified fire inspector and licensed through the state to be able to do those. And those are one-time inspections in, in the beginning to make sure that they meet the standards set forth. So on the residential side of group homes, I think many are formed and then also go, so we don't keep track of, we haven't kept track, been able to keep track of what, how many have left as far as residential, but as far as the commercial ones, we're seeing, as you can see, more and more with, towards McKnight Plaza, Polar Plaza, downtown at K&amp;J, these are larger facilities that we're inspecting and being a part of. So those are one-time inspections. We do, are able to recoup a minimal fee of $50 for those inspections that is, is passed on to the city, but those are fairly on the lower end, I would say, from group homes in the city. We have roughly anywhere from 18 to 20 group homes that are, we've done inspections for and are currently operating, and it just seems to be more of the trend lately as, as you can tell, with hospitals closing and not being able to care for them as much there's, it's spreading out to the communities. As far as the rental properties, at the end of 2021, the data that we had at the time was single-family, we had 97, 22 duplex, 45 multifamily, that include four plexes along with the buildings that have 18 units in them as well. So even though it's, it's 45 buildings, some of those could have anywhere from four units to 18, 18 units that would be inspected as well.
So you don't, the rental properties, single-family, it's just a one-time inspection?
No, for single-family, so the license is, the licensing period for single-family rentals is, is, begins July 1st and runs through June 30th, and we, every year, they apply for the license and we review it. We do inspections, or prior to COVID, we were doing inspections every other year. So right now, because we missed two years because of COVID, we're not, we're off schedule, and we're, we're making sure that we're getting into everything this next year, as best as we're able to do to get in there. So annually, each unit is, or each property has to apply for a license, and that goes for all rental properties across the board, whether they're single-family, duplex, or multifamily, a large complex.
This just comes to mind, and I'm going to, chief, group homes, do we have problems with group homes at all? I mean, for officers responding?
Not significantly, no, not, not a regular problem.
Okay. I just hear in other cities, that can be a potential problem, is the cause to group homes.
Yeah, I definitely experienced that in my time in Ramsey County with some of the group homes in the contract cities, but we thankfully haven't.
Pretty quiet, okay. That's good, that's good to know.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jason? Councilmember Thorson?
Just some comments, I mean, so we're kind of hearing that there's some issues when dealing with code compliance and, and, you know, zoning inspections or inspections, because we have part-time staff, and then if they're not available, then it's being, you know, the burden's getting pushed on to the full-time staff. Have we looked at possibly contracting that out to other, certainly, we, we used to have an in-house building inspector, we've contracted that out to Minspec. Does a company like Minspec offer those services to where, you know, it's just, we, we shift to there? I don't know if that's something we've looked at, or if they offer those services, or if they don't, if there's other agencies. Excuse me, I know, I know Falcon Heights doesn't exist anymore, but when they did, I think they contracted with St. Paul Fire to do inspections, because St. Paul has much larger department and, and staff dedicated to that. Or just the whole idea of, why is the fire department doing, you know, code compliance in the first place? Why, why are we sending members of our volunteer department who are filling this part-time role to go, you know, write letters about lawn grass and, and things? So maybe, you know, if we're talking about creating a community development director position, maybe we shift those responsibilities out of the fire. maybe we shift those responsibilities out of the fire department and into that department and look at either contracting it that way through that department and that department head would oversee that or looking at part-time or maybe even potentially full-time staff and just dealing with those code compliance issues and inspections and zoning inspections that kind of don't fall into the traditional fire department realm, which then would free up your time to commit to doing the rental inspections, the fire-related inspections. I don't know if that's something that we've looked at. But I guess, you know, absent of a full-time city manager, I mean, that's probably someone who would be making that evaluation. I know those are probably big changes, but I just, just some comments that while you're talking, I was jotting down. So that's kind of all I have.
Yeah, councilor Thorson, then as far as I know, I'm not aware of any conversations, but I could be well absent from any of those previously as well to the, as far as contacting Minspec or others about providing those services. I would only assume maybe there were conversations about that when we were first going to Minspec and obviously seeing that as a way to reduce costs. I'm just assuming we kept it in-house and as a way to provide, you know, services and being able to provide additional response through the fire department. But I agree, traditionally, those are not some things that are done by fire departments. You can look around the metro area, some do them, some do not. And it's, I guess it's decisions made by city managers.
It's always been that way, hasn't it? I mean, since I've been on the council, it's always.
For quite some time, I know when I joined code compliance full-time in 2005, it was being done in fire well before that, you know, part-time, well before that, within the fire department, the fire inspections and code compliance. I can, you know, D. Martino was one of the guys that was a code compliance guy and Jack O'J was fire inspections and they were both part-time within the fire department. And that was definitely before 2000s.
Do you have like the stats on lawn with, you know, what are those code compliance issues?
So I brought back with the 2021 code compliance, the top list of what they dealt with last year. So they had 172 total, and I'll just hit the top ones. Parking on unapproved surfaces was the highest one to yard maintenance, trash and debris, tall grass and weeds, tree and bush issues and inoperable vehicles and snow and ice removal. So those were basically the top concerns that code compliance had dealt with.
Abandoned cars and is that part of?
Pardon me?
Abandoned cars? Do we have, I know we used to have.
If we do, that's usually Phil's realm to deal with abandoned vehicles, which he was talking about earlier today, that a lot of abandoned cars stolen.
Yeah, we're absolutely seeing a lot more of that, stolen vehicles being dumped in our city. So we're involved in a lot of that.
Talking one or two, you're talking five?
Yeah, I mean, one a week at least. Yeah, we're, so we're involved with other agencies and where these stones are coming out of and working every angle of investigation to try to do what we can to prevent that from St. Paul being a dumping grounds for stolen cars, but we're working.
Councilmember Peterson, do you have any?
No, I'm just trying to take it all in. I know, I think it's important for code enforcement to keep things neat and tidy and to keep on top of it. I know if you don't have the staff and you can't really keep on.
Councilmember Cole? Either one.
I'll go next.
Or you call now.
You can go ahead and then I'll go.
Jason, thank you for walking through the needs and the reasons and the rationales. Greatly appreciated. I followed everything, which is good for me. And I appreciate the fact that you've, while asking for additional headcount, you've offered up a couple of potential saving points to help fund that. I guess, are you digging too deep? Are you, I, through looking at this, I understand that you've definitely prioritized the full-time fire inspector and completely understand the need for that. But in getting to that goal, are you underselling yourself at one or both of the other two points to get there?
Like I said before, I'm not a good salesman and I tend to take workload on and bury myself pretty deep. But after talking to Dan recently, he's helped me through some of those issues. And I'm, I believe that this is a really good step for us because although on the cusp of it, we see a full-time fire inspector that can be added to the position Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30. But you have to understand, our department operates as a part-time paid-on-call as well. And that even includes me. So after hours, myself and Brent are a part of the department and response and how we handle things. And my goal would be to have this third position to remain similar to that. So I'm hoping in the areas of building up core services to the city, that that will in fact help out. I, I am making a cut to, by cutting the part-time code compliance officer because it would still be under what we were in 2018 or 2019. But again, that's just an offer that to show that there is a need for a full-time position and what I'm willing to do to get there.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Roy?
Yeah, thank you for your presentation. I had a similar question about attrition. If you were to reduce something, are you missing out on compensating for another area that is much needed? Another question that I'm curious about, what is the timeline in which, you know, the inspectors, you know, once they get some sort of request, what is the turnaround time for that or what is the expectation?
As far as to conduct an inspection of a property? Yes, so I've said this before to a couple of department heads. Right now, I have a great worker in our current fire inspector captain, Brent Fixon. He's a hard worker and he digs in and he goes right after it. So we are getting, he's communicating with our inspection requests immediately and setting up inspections within two to three days and making sure that we're getting out there and getting the process started for it. So typically, the way it goes is once the request comes in for the properties, on a single family anyway, you know, we'll get it scheduled, he'll get out there, do the inspection with the property owner and go through and do the report and give them the 30 days to make the necessary repairs and then get back to them and schedule another inspection. But the larger multifamily properties, I make him schedule at least three days, three calendar days during the work week. That will include potentially two days doing inspections. Because if you're going through, say, a large complex like Seer View that has 12 buildings with 18 units in the common areas and boiler rooms and all that, it's going to take a long time to walk through and then put your notes together and then put together the reports and get everything documented and uploaded and sent to the correct people. So those typically take longer. Right now, we have our inspections set up so that we're doing single-family homes during the summertime. So their licensing begins July 1st. This allows us to deal with exterior property issues that we see on homes, such as chipping and peeling paint, for instance, and just exterior issues that we wouldn't be able to deal with in the wintertime. So the multifamily licensing period begins January 1st. We typically don't see those same exterior problems because they're typically commercial buildings that are brick and don't have the same necessities as far as exteriors. So by doing that, it allows us to focus on certain areas, properties throughout the year and spreading out the inspections throughout the year.
Thank you. Another question I have is, from what you're describing, there sounds like a large backlog due to the pandemic. So for instance, if a full-time inspector were to be, you know, approved, how long do you think it would take to kind of catch up? And then is there still sufficient amount of work for that individual to continue?
I do believe there's going to be sufficient work for that individual. I believe there's work that we're not able to get to right now, that there are things that I could be doing better as a chief and providing, looking to better operate the department instead of being down here in the weeds, working sometimes as an inspector or code compliance officer. Over the two years of COVID, we were still doing licensing. We were still looking at these properties just from the exterior. So it did make it a little less time-consuming and easier to deal with. And now that we're getting inside with the property owners, even the property owners are surprised because they haven't, they've been afraid to go in them as well. So they haven't been in them and they're realizing more or less the workload's going to be on them as the repair piece of it for them to take care of. For us, it would just be being able to provide a consistent workload across the board instead of having a part-time person deal with some things and having two full-time people take on the duties and being able to allow me to relinquish some of those duties where they should be with a fire inspector instead of with myself.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Jason, you mentioned when you do an inspection, I was kind of curious, when you said chip paint or whatever, so do you tell them they have to?
Yeah.
Fix those and if they don't fix it, they get a citation and?
They don't have a license, they don't get a license. So typically, and it would have to be fairly severe, but those are areas that we address definitely. And the exterior property, we have a property maintenance code book that the city adopted along with the fire code, and that's just the same. So it's making sure that the home, garage, any additional accessory units are in good condition. And we make the property owners deal with those issues.
And that's just a one-time inspection? No, it's every two years.
Every two years.
That's right.
Every two years, we go out there and do an inspection.
Got it, got it. And then talk about open gov, does that, has that increased your, do you think, the amount of?
I think it's made, it's allowed us to have better communication and quicker and easier. So we used to mail out hundreds of packets that were full of 20 pieces of paper and all of that was done by hand. And now this is our first year in working through the renewal portion of the initial licensing process through open gov. And it has worked out quite a bit. So it makes it easier on the end user because once they complete the application, their information is in there. So they don't have to fill it out every year, whereas previously, they got a piece of paper that they had to fill out by hand and then mail back to us with a check. And everything's done online and the communication is instant, as you can tell. And it's been, any issues that we've had, which there haven't been many, we've been able to deal with, carry on and improve things. And definitely, the multifamily property owners are extremely happy about this because if they had 12 buildings, then they had 12 hand pieces of reports that they had to fill out. And with open gov, they don't have to do that.
How many chicken and bees do we have?
I do have that.
I know when we pass this, we're going to have like hundreds of them and I think it's.
So in 2021, we did 12 inspections for the chickens and there was one beekeeping license. I haven't, I didn't pull numbers for thus far this year on that. But I know there have been a handful and it is one area that, again, we have what's in our code and we make sure that they're building it and putting it in place as is required by the code. So they'll go out and meet with the property owner and talk to them about it, look at it, measure it, make sure. Now, once it's done and operating, we don't have a procedure in place to go back annually or anything like that to make sure that they're not adding more chickens than they're supposed to. But if somebody were to give us a concern or a complaint, I'm sure we would look into it.
Have you had complaints?
I have not had a complaint come across as it relates to somebody having a legal. We've had complaints about people having some roosters running around, which is not allowed. So that's a whole different issue. But the legal, the ones that have applied and have had, are doing it the correct way. As far as I know, I haven't had any complaints.
Good, it's good to hear. I got one more comment and I just want to say that code compliance to me is the image of our city. And it's very important that we do have code compliance and that we're up to, because I think that's one of the biggest complaints that I get is code compliance. And it does affect, you know, neighbors and neighborhoods and, you know, so I commend you and what you have done in the past, but I think it's very important that we do.
And I'll go on to say with code compliance, I mean, just like anything else, a lot of the times if we deal with a property owner and let them know that there's a problem, the good property owners, you know, will understand and realize it and, you know, fix that problem. It's these really bad properties that we spend a lot of time on and we have a handful of them that we deal with consistently and they require consistent time and legal counsel. And it takes a lot of time to get these bad ones under control.
Good, anything else for?
Yeah, is it possible to take, you know, have like a snapshot of all the types of compliance calls you get or inspections through open gov?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, the expert back there, yes.
Thank you, Perry. Yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Once again, this is just excellent conversation, which now requires me to ask a question to, of Jason, picking up on some of the dialogue, in particular, councilmember Thorson and councilmember. Thorson and Councilmember Cole. And so, looking at the possibility of in the future, if, I'm just going to call it community development, were to take over code compliance, and so code compliance was no longer a requirement underneath you, would you still need that full-time fire inspector?
I would say yes, from the standpoint of, now, if you're going to reduce, yeah, code compliance to the standpoint of taking, I'm sorry, the zoning inspections and code compliance, from the standpoint of fire inspections itself and rental properties, commercial properties, we have a lot of work to be done to help improve where we're at and bring our systems up to date, our pre-plannings. There's a lot of work that needs to be done and maintained and continued to do consistently in years ahead.
Okay. And then I have two more questions, depending on your response. This is one of two part-time code compliance officers that we currently have in the budget. If, again, those responsibilities were not underneath you, could you do all of the fire inspection and the work that you're mandated to do with the loss of this position and the other code compliance individual?
Yes, with one, so if I had two full-time fire inspectors, correct, yes.
And so now I'm going to play off of Councilmember Cole's with the responses that were just given. Are we being, a question that's going to come back to everybody here is, are we being short-sighted in eliminating that part-time code compliance and at least having the funding available in the 2023 budget, not filling it at this point in time and waiting for a city manager to come on board, opening up the potential opportunity that Councilmember Thorson had brought up of removing that function from Jason's underneath the fire chiefs. And we open up the opportunity of then looking at whether it's a contracted out or we go out and actually fill that, fill that one position. And if it's determined to contract out, then through attrition, you would end up removing the other part-time position. But at least the funding would be in place.
Well, I think that's, it's a number, kind of a numbers game, is what we're playing, you know. So if we go to a contract, we still have an expense. We don't know what that.
Exactly. But this ends up becoming a placeholder for that expense, whether it's contracted or whether we fill that position. If we remove it, and again, the question that Councilmember calls it, if we remove that, we have a hole in 2023, which doesn't allow us the flexibility to look to what was suggested by Councilmember Thorson. And I think that there is, there is some validity into looking into that. And we're just not currently at the structure to be able to do that at this point in time. But hopefully, that's going to be coming soon.
And I think that'd be a whole discussion of itself, because if, once you go to the contract, you kind of, you kind of lose identity too in regards to how you deal with your, and I'm hearing things on the other side, code inspection, that we do lose some sort of identity working with these, with, working with, you know, the residents.
And I agree with that. But if we remove it out of this, if there's, so if we accept the adding of the full-time fire inspector and we accept the two reductions, we're removing a pot of money that could be used for whether it's contracted or in-house staff. And I personally agree with you as far as the in-house staff. But we don't have that, if we remove this, we don't have that opportunity coming into the 2023. And I think that is a very legitimate suggestion that was brought up. And it's just, I like listening. It formulates other ideas. And so I'm posing it back based upon the responses that Jason had given, that do we hold that in? And if you are in agreement with adding the fire inspector, we would remove the initial duty shift, but we would leave in place the part-time code compliance.
Councilmember Thorson?
Just to, I mean, I'm not trying to say, let's eliminate portions of the fire. I'm just, I phrase the question is, because, you know, as someone who was on the fire department knows people that do this, let's just pose this question. It's rhetorical. No one needs to say it. How many people in this room have cleaned a toilet in this building since you've worked here? Probably none, because we hire someone to do it. But if we wanted to save money, we could ask each department to clean your own bathrooms and to clean your own areas, to clean your own sections of the building. Code compliance, to me, is one of those things that no one really likes to do. No one likes to have to write up a letter, hey, clean your yard, you know, mow your grass. It's complaint-driven most of the time. But we just acknowledge it's a concern. It's a main concern. So if we don't have sufficient staffing, and the staff we do have, it gets pushed off. It's not a priority. Why aren't we exploring other options to deliver it? And, you know, to me, if it's min-spec or if it's in-house, it's not, I don't think it really matters if it's someone with a badge coming up. I mean, we could create a cold, North St. Paul code compliance badge they can wear. I mean, it's, the fact is, the important thing is that it's done. And it would be nice if there was more proactive code enforcement rather than this complaint-driven. But, you know, obviously, he's highlighted why we can't do that. And so that's why I bring that up. Maybe we look at doing something a little different than we have in the past and, you know, just having a discussion about it, so.
And Councilmember Thorson, what I'm saying is, I'm in full agreement with what you just said. To me, cutting this, cutting the $41,000 eliminates some of that opportunity that could come out of the discussion that we move in the future. It could be that it remains in the fire. It could be that it moves over. And it could be that it's contracted service, could be that it's in-house. But if we remove that $41,000, we remove those possibilities. And so I would like to leave it, my suggestion would be, based on this conversation, to leave it in. And it opens up, I think, additional opportunities, which will be further discussed at the point in time into the future.
I think we're at the point where we could leave it in, and we could always take it out in the future.
Absolutely.
But leaving it in, you know, so Jason, I ask you, so what Councilmember Thorson said, are we, you know, we're complaint-based, would this open it up more to just going out general code compliance, which I don't think we do as much right now?
So we are, we do try to be proactive. I will say, he is correct in saying, we do deal, majority of what we deal with is complaint-based. That is for sure. But I also advise our, all, our entire team, whether it's our part-time code compliance and Brent, is when you're out there and you're going through the communities and you see things that don't look like they fit in, or there's a problem, to address those, you know, take it up. So they are doing some, it's not driving down the road with tunnel vision and not looking at anything else, but as things come up to address those. But definitely, the majority of what we deal with is complaint-based.
And I would say, you know, by even adding that in, the marketing piece too, for education, you know, and I think we lack that also, is getting the word out there. What is, you know, your compliance? You know, what are new residents coming in? You know, they don't understand a lot of times.
Correct.
Where if you correct that, you may eliminate a lot of.
And I think we have the tools and the technology now to be able to do some of the stuff much easier than we previously did. I know, a long time ago, we put together flyers and mailers and those types of things to go out. But there's, along with that and the technology that we have, there's easy ways of getting that information out.
I think that, to me, is a very important part of what you guys do over there, is to educate people in regards to, it doesn't have to be a, you know, a ticket. It's more of an education piece.
Usually, that's what it comes down to. They maybe just didn't realize or know. I mean, we still had people in June that hadn't mowed their grass, and they said it was because no mo May. And even though we didn't follow that, and it was June.
Right.
It's just, it's a learning piece and educating them.
Right, right.
Dan, were you looking for guidance from council?
I will be.
Because I'm happy to give you my opinion, but I didn't know if you're looking for guidance as to whether you're.
We are quickly running upon the time, so I'm going to.
I've got this feeling that I think the fire is kind of the topic tonight.
Yeah, okay.
Invite you guys back.
So I'm going to, I'm going to start out with, you know, we're at the 6.87%, which is in that average, modified average target range that was given last workshop. If we were to look at, and we'll just, we'll stop it right at, after the fire grouping here, if we were to add a fire inspector and only reduce the initial duty shift, and that's also including taking the LGA reduction at this point in time from the street maintenance fund and not the general fund, we would be at approximately six, little over 6%. What is the sense or the feeling on, of that?
Say that again, taking that.
So if we take the two top parts, the suggestion of reducing the LGA, in other words, the reduction isn't coming from the general fund, it's coming from street maintenance. And then we add a full-time inspector and we only reduce the initial duty shift amount, our levy at this, by making those changes would be a little over 6%. So are we in agreement, first of all, with shifting the loss of LGA revenue, not from the general fund, but shifting the loss and reducing it from the street maintenance fund?
And I think, I think that's a numbers game that we're kind of playing.
Yep, yep, that's.
I mean, I'm fine with that.
Okay. And that's what, because part of it is all predicated on that, because if we don't make that reduction, we're quickly starting to get up to seven, eight. And if we add other positions, we will be approaching a double-digit. And I certainly don't think that that was in the range overall of what the city council's intentions were. So yes, it is a numbers game, but it has to be one that we're all comfortable with. So I'm hearing that we're comfortable with that. If there's any disagreement, please let me know. Okay, not hearing any, I'll, I'm taking the direction that we'll make that change. So we're at a 4.82%. Now, do I hear, based upon the dialogue and questioning and presentation by Jason, we would add a full-time fire inspector?
So we're not voting right now. So we're just kind of making, I would say, you know, keep that in the.
Keep that in there.
Yeah. I would be in favor of keeping a full-time.
Other, Councilmember Peterson would be in favor of that.
Yeah, I would be, I would be even in favor of that as well as at least keeping the $41,000 for the code compliance in the budget for now. Always something that can be pulled out later, but.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. Does that seem to be kind of the consensus at this point in time?
Again, we're not voting, but.
No, 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 this is, this is, this is just really helping us trying to develop our next round of, you know, that we're going to come back with to, you know, hone in on that target to where we're at. So after the, this change right here, we're at, we're approximately 6%. In the next workshop, we will talk about the addition of a public works maintenance worker. Is there any other information regarding the general fund that you want to see coming to the next workshop? The plan moving forward is in the second meeting in August, well, actually, it's the only meeting in August that'll be being conducted. We will be doing a lot of dialogue on the capital improvement program. And if time permits, we'll be looking at enterprise funds and fund balances. That may end up getting pushed out, or we may end up wanting to have another scheduled special session to have some of those other dialogues.
And I think, you know, having a special, just a budget session is good too.
Yeah.
We've done that in the past.
Absolutely, absolutely. So focusing on just general fund, are there some other additional information that you would like to see? This has been a fantastic dialogue tonight. I think it really gives us, you know, that we're on the right path.
We're on the right path. And I think the public works will be on the hot seat at the next, next meeting.
Absolutely.
Jason got all your money.
I will be keeping, I will be keeping my dialogue really short, so he has a lot more time.
Yeah. No, I think you're going in the right direction here. Yep.
It'd be helpful for future one, future conversations to have maybe more data as well, in terms of numbers around, you know, the need of things, if that makes sense.
You're looking more from a statistical standpoint on, absolutely, okay.
And I think, I think that you always had kind of the year-end summary of the amount of calls that you had for, you know, what are they? It opens our eyes to, you know, what's going on out there. Don't start singing karaoke.
No, I won't. I agree. It was February or March when I did the year-end summary. So quite some time ago, it could have included that. Obviously, I have those numbers in front of me, but I'm sure it would have been more helpful for you as well, so.
Yeah, thank you.
We will provide that information to you. And then also, we'll have some statistical information regarding the request on the public work side and some of the reasoning to why he's got that request moving forward.
Good. And Jason, I just want to say, I want to appreciate your staff because, like you said, you know, like Councilmember Thorson said, code enforcement is different than firefighting. And you guys come up with, you have to deal with a lot of different scenarios. And you are the image of our city. So I thank you very much for that. City manager?
That's all we had for topics on the workshop for this evening.
Okay. So if we don't have any other questions for department heads that are here, and I appreciate you two coming here, but I, I think it's important that we hear the whole, the whole story. So I appreciate you coming here. And I'm assuming that we're going to hear from you at the next time. So I don't know if you want to schedule them, because I think it does take a little bit longer, especially for budget for the, for the year, especially if they're asking for, for certain things. So with that, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Wong.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, we are adjourned and we got about three minutes.